Signal.
You are good to go.
All right. Good morning. Welcome. I'm Jean McKnight, Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. This meeting will not have public comment. There was no hearing at this meeting. And first we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martin Jacobs.
Present.
Paul Alpert.
Present.
Adam Block.
Present.
So we have four of the five members of the planning board present, and that is a quorum. And of course, we know that others may be able to see and hear us and anything we share or state. We matter of public record. Now, all supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website. www.NeedhamMA.gov unless otherwise noted. All votes will be by roll call. And let me also introduce our planning department staff. Planning Director of Planning and Community Development, Lee Newman.
Present.
Assistant Planner Alexandra Klee.
Present.
And Clay Hutchinson of Conservation Administrator, who provides technical support for us. So let us begin the meeting. Our agenda simply is, you know, to discuss a town meeting articles. At this special town meeting today, there are two articles that affect us. One is the Planning Department line item in the budget. And the other is Article 12, under which $60,000 would be appropriated for planning studies for the hiring of technical advisors, consultants to help us with planning studies. The Select Board voted in favor of Article 12. I watched the presentation of the Finance Committee Chair and understood that the Finance Committee voted not in favor of this $60,000 appropriation by a five to four votes, so four in favor, five against. And really, it seemed as though their only objection is they said funds should be in the department line item budget rather than in a separate article. Now, as we know, that is actually different from the advice we have gotten a couple of years ago on these studies. So that's where we are with that. Paul Alpert.
Yes, actually, I heard more more reasons than that, and I don't remember all of them. The one that struck me, because I've seen this before, was that there were there were Finance Committee members who felt that they wanted they wanted us to go to the Finance Committee to request funds so that they could know and discuss what the funds were being used for before approving it.
For studies?
Rather than giving us a blank check. And the reason I say I've seen this before is that last year, was it the last year or the year before? But I think, yeah, it would have been the year before because I was physically at a meeting. The CPC had an article, the Community Preservation Commission Committee had had an article to just transfer $25,000 to the Conservation Commission fund that the Conservation Commission has, so that they would have funds to do something like this. You know, for whatever purposes they use that fund for. And the Finance Committee voted against it, saying, no, if the Conservation Commission needs money, they want the Conservation Commission to go to them and ask for funds out of the reserve fund. And it's the same kind of reasoning here that somebody on the Finance Committee raised. Carol didn't say in her presentation who was speaking on what. But evidently, this is something that people on the Finance Committee have where they want the other boards. They want tighter control.
Paul, you're absolutely right. I participated in the meeting with Lee of the Finance Committee. And that was very much cited as their reasoning. If we need the money, you know, the special fund that the Finance Committee can allow spending from during the year. They wanted us to come to them for that spending. I don't recall Carol saying that in her presentation. Perhaps she did.
Because I wouldn't have gotten it elsewhere.
All right, Paul. So if she did say that then in her presentation. So that was their reasoning. I'm very glad that we had such supportive strong support, I would say, from the Board of Selectmen. So it was now, I'm not aware of any idea that somebody would propose an amendment to reduce the amount. But I suppose that's always possible. And we can discuss, you know, we'll be there, we'll be continuing this meeting through the special town meeting. So if that comes, if there is such an amendment, we can discuss that at the time since we will have a quorum there and we can make the decision on how we respond to such an amendment.
I would suggest that we have the discussion now so we can be responsive in the moment.
Okay.
And the other comment I would make is that with respect to Article 12, I don't know how realistic it is. I'm just speaking almost extemporaneously. And yet, given the criticism, the vicious criticism that we've received, which has been unfounded by in particular Barry Pollak, I would not be surprised if he calls question on this item and seeks to debate it and in particular eliminate it or to reduce it substantially, either with a motion to amend or just to encourage everybody to oppose it, the article. And in the event that he is successful on the town meeting floor, Lee, what happens if we do need to do a study?
We won't have the money. I mean, it's as simple as that. I mean, this appropriation is to provide funds to enable us to hire consultants when it's required in our regulatory function and in our function as a planning board, looking at the issues that the town wants us to address, whether it's inclusionary zoning or whether it's a look at constraints that exist in the business districts for redevelopment. I mean, we will not have the funds to do that, so we'll.
I don't have the warrant in front of me. Is this before or after we do the general budget?
No, I have the warrant right here.
Why? It's after, because the budget is Article 6 under the Finance articles. There are human resource articles first. There are five of them.
That's correct.
And then the first article for the Finance article is amend the 2021 operating budget. And then we're number 12.
You say we won't have the money if this article is defeated. I mean, I think that's true, but we won't have the money until and unless we go back to the Finance Committee and ask for an appropriation out of the reserve fund.
That's correct. They'd have to approve it out of the reserve fund.
And what would the timeframe be to make that ask and get approval? Can that be done in the space of a month or two?
Probably within a month or two. We'd have to make the request. We'd have to go to them, make, you know, argue what we want the money for. And then they would actually decide whether or not they're going to authorize that.
I could really cause a problem for some people and maybe even get myself disliked by a lot of people. If I, I was hoping that this would be after Article 12. If I stood up when we get to the line item for our budget at town meeting on the general budget to increase our expense line by $60,000. And of course, we have a rule that says you have to say where it's going to come from, and I would just say, take it from reserve fund. See, people don't realize, Michael Fee doesn't tell people. But if you want to increase the budget on any line item, and he says, well, you have to say where a line item is going to be decreased, you just take it out of the reserve fund. That's where the money comes from. There's an allocation to the reserve fund every year.
Oh, Paul, your motion would take the money out of the reserve fund. It wouldn't take it out of.
If it passes, we can withdraw Article 12. And I might even say that if I were to make the motion. I think politically, that's a very difficult motion for me to make.
Of course, it doesn't deal with Finance Committee's objection wanting tighter control.
Correct.
But the planning board is an elected board. I mean, you are an elected board. So do you, I mean, I guess, so I asked the questions, do you need to be, do you need that level of control by the Finance Committee if you are elected to perform a purpose and you need flexibility?
If we don't have money, we don't have money.
That's correct.
Also, doesn't it seem that the reserve fund should be used for unanticipated expenses? This is an anticipated expense, although we don't know exactly what consultants would want to hire and what that particular thing is going to cost. We estimate that our planning studies over the next several years will be $60,000. That's a reasonable estimate. We have a long list of planning studies to speak to. So that, you know, that's really, I think, a big argument against relying on the reserve fund. But you know what, Paul, I hesitate to support the strategy you described.
So do I.
It's because it seems, I don't know, disrespectful to the strong support we got from the Select Board on this article.
Gotcha.
It is. It is. But it's their prerogative. And I think the reality is, as I understand it, the construction of our town government system is that Finance Committee is ultimately the final check on public policy. They don't have to be, I mean, really, town meetings should become and not Finance Committee. They render their opinion and town meeting ought to be. And yet, because it's the town meeting sovereignty to determine how it wants to fund and therefore make relevant any public policy. FinCom decides not to provide sound public policy and to deny a reasonable request for consulting to ensure the ongoing planning efforts that the rest of the town has asked us to embark on is ridiculous. And I think that should be included in a forceful rebuttal to FinCom's opposition. I think we also need to, you know, be very stern in a response to Barry, who would probably stand up and oppose this.
Well, we don't know that he's going to do that. Let me suggest this, for what it's worth. If I can get the town meeting in time, I will approach Michael Fee and ask him if Article 12 is defeated, can I open up the budget under the omnibus warrant article at the end to amend the planning board line item on the general budget to increase expenses by $60,000.
I wish there was a way to do that earlier, because when it becomes the end, there's the expectation that we dissolve.
But that's the only place tactically where procedurally we can do it.
Yeah, it might be a good idea, and I could do this too, is to read the town meeting guide that Michael Fee put together about all these things.
Maybe I should approach somebody on the Finance Committee. Because.
And the Select Board, Mary Ann Cooley, I think.
Okay. Because one of the reasons for the omnibus provision is that as things get voted on other financial matters, Finance Committee uses the omnibus warrant article to square things up.
I have a slightly different idea, because I fear what Adam fears is that put this in the omnibus and keep it to the end. Everybody's trying to get out of there. What about if we go back to your first idea? Move to increase our budget by 60. And if you're worried about offending the selectmen, let's make a call to the selectmen now and see if they would support that.
Well, the other issue is that $60,000 was supposed to be spent over multiple years. You see, when it's in the budget, you have to spend it within that fiscal year.
I see.
Yep.
So I mean.
Point.
Okay.
That's an important point.
So, you know, but you're basically probably doing a smaller allocation over multiple years. But the flexibility of having it, you know, as a warrant article, which, you know, it crossed fiscal years.
So we need to say that in our rebuttal. We need to make sure people understand the timing here.
That was the whole thought process for why initially in 2015, it was the $45,000, which was the initial appropriation. The Finance Committee recommended it be done through an article. That was the thought process when we did the appropriation last year for the $60,000. Although for the 60, we ended up using quickly because the priority was to do the planning work that was required to make an informed choice on Highway Commercial 1. We had a project.
The other, what if we mention that if this motion, that if Article 12 fails, that we will come back, pending, Paul, what guidance you get from the moderator, that we intend to come back and open the omnibus to amend the budget with a line item. We need an operational budget to be able to conduct the studies and do the business of town.
Lee? If we don't get the $60,000, so that we want to open it up for the budget at the omnibus, and as you mentioned, it has to be spent in one year, how much would you recommend we ask for for the coming fiscal year?
$25,000 or $30,000. I mean, ideally, I'd like to have $30,000 in there, just so I have flexibility. But 25, I think we can live with 25.
Just so I'm clear, how much was Natasha's work?
Natasha's work alone was $25,000. She worked was over $30,000.
And Judy Barrett, she was 35 or seven or something?
Judy was $7,300.
So if we're going to study equitable housing, for instance, and we need to probably hire Judy again or someone like Judy, we need to hire someone else who can study affordable housing.
Well, the affordable housing piece of it, we're fortunate, we have a housing specialist on our staff, Karen Sinnerborg, who's very strong in that area. So we're not going to need to bring in an outside housing consultant.
I think it's the prospect of studying the area between May and Rosemary, the Highland area strip, and also the other industrial districts in addition to Industrial 1 that we were talking about.
So on.
And also, you know, looking at sustainable development issues, you know, that's going to probably require some outside expertise, so.
We have a strategy then.
Lee, wait a minute. One further point. Lee, am I correct that if we could get an additional 30 grand through the omnibus, we would still be able to go back to the FinCom during the year and ask for more out of the reserve, couldn't we?
Yes, we can always ask for it.
We could do both. Okay.
One pitfall is that if we ask for less than 60 in the budget, then we will be criticized, I would think, for needing less on the line item budget.
No, because we clearly say it's multiple years.
In making the motion, I would explain that Article 12 was for funding for multiple years. Opening the budget is only for this fiscal year. And therefore, I'm making the motion for the amount that we anticipate we will need during this fiscal year.
And I think we should probably advocate at that point then that those funds through the budget, as you know, to study public policy and zoning is to support our master plan. I think that's a reasonable point to make.
Well, it's to support the planning initiatives that we outlined in the presentation. I don't know if we'd call that a master plan. Would you call it?
No, I wouldn't call it a master plan. I would call it what our strategic planning goals are for the next couple of years.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that there's broad-based support for the strategic planning goals for the next few years.
Well, I think there's support for looking at equitable housing. I think there's support for looking at sustainable development.
But there's not support for the planning board, and this article supports the planning board. It's a positioning thing. There's a fault in the logic. And what you're talking about are pockets of support, which is a political notion. It's not a rational notion. And the divisiveness here, I think, is palpable. And that's why I thought that as all of these, in effect, will inform our master plan at some point, there may be more support for the concept of making a contribution, as all of the items that Jean correctly noted in her presentation ultimately support aspects of our master plan. I don't think there'd be.
I frankly, if somebody said, where is your master plan? I don't know where I would point them to. We haven't done what would be referred to as a master plan in a long time, in my memory. Is that rightly?
We've made the decision to do strategic planning around specific issues. That's kind of been the strategy that Needham adopted when I went there 30 years ago. I mean, that was the.
Yep, long ago, in that timeframe, you know, coming out of my own planning experience. There's really quite a debate in the planning profession about the usefulness of master plans. So we don't use that term so much. Yep.
If I may, you know, I need to get to town meeting early to get into some of these things. So let's try to move on. So I will try to get there in time to speak to whoever, probably Michael Fee, to ask if Article 12 doesn't pass, can we open up the budget line item in the omnibus? If the answer is no, the answer is no.
Cooley in the loop, because she's been involved in this and she's been very supportive.
Yeah, I will. I will.
And if I'm to speak under Article 12 to support the appropriation in light of the FinCom's negative recommendation, I think there are three points. And one is we need the flexibility of multiple year. And by having it in the budget as suggested, it doesn't give us that flexibility. And that we do have projects that we need this money for, that we have identified. So, but then the third thing, that the idea that the Finance Committee is overstepping its role to want to have control. I feel that's argumentative.
It is. Don't go there.
No, I don't want to. Okay. Just want to put that out there.
But maybe mention that we first did this in 2015 at the suggestion of the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Yes, because originally I went in with a smaller appropriation as a line item. And then it was rethought to do it for multiple years to create that flexibility. And it worked well, because it took us almost, you know, four years to spend down the initial $45,000.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, I think there's some irritation on the part of the Finance Committee that we spent the $60,000 within a year. But it was also responsive to what they asked us to do. They wanted a traffic study. They wanted an updated fiscal impact study.
And it was the $45,000 over three years, did you say, Lee? Three?
Let me get you the exact number of years. I gave that to you in that spreadsheet. Jean, I'll text you the exact number of years.
Okay.
I want to make sure I have it right. I think.
Yeah, because you did say it was 2015, so it must have been maybe.
I don't know. There was another one in between, Jean. I think it was 2019.
No, the one, we had one last year. We have two appropriations, one for $45,000 and one for 60. The one for 60 was done in 2020. And that's what financed essentially Highway Commercial 1, all the work we did on that.
So it was 2015 and then 2020?
Yeah, so I think it was actually five years, because I ended up spending the last, you know, $5,000.
Okay, good on that.
In the 2015 appropriation, in 2020.
All right, so then let's move on to Barry Pollak's latest.
Jean, can I just say one thing? There is one more article, although I don't think you'll be asked to say anything on that, and that's Article 10. That's the Small Repair Grant Program. That has the support of the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, of course, and the Select Board. And that's an appropriation for $50,000, and that's the continuation of that program. And I'm hopeful that it will go through on the consent calendar.
Yeah. But if I have to say anything about it, I know it's for lower-income homeowners who wish to make small repairs on their property that they otherwise might not be able to afford. And it is a grant, not a loan. Is that correctly?
That is correct.
Yeah. And so that enables them to make these repairs, which might be needed for handicapped accessibility to make their heating system more efficient.
And I would expect the Select Board would speak to that, because Karen and I have provided them with all the data on the clients, people who have been serviced and the number of people that have been serviced and the types of repairs. So I think that they'll take the lead on that through the housing.
Okay. Okay. So I don't know what my role would be, except to rise and say that the Planning Board supports this article.
Right.
Yeah.
I just want you to be aware of it.
Okay. So the Barry Pollak Amendment. Like the prior amendment, it changes the open space percentage requirement from 25% to 30%. So that's number one. Then number two, it deletes, I mean, excuse me, it reduces the FAR, by special permit FAR from 1.35 to 1. That is really the key here, that it reduces the special permit FAR substantially. Then it has also a provision to be added to the considerations when we are granting a special permit. And it would say, the new sentence would say, "To encourage mixed-use development, when considering a special permit, the planning board can give further favorable consideration to mixed-use plants that devote a substantial amount of the floor area. Beyond that allowed by right," in other words, going above the by right FAR of what, 0.7, right?
0.7.
0.7, right. To uses, two uses. Dwelling units and indoor athletic exercise fitness, skating rink uses that with regard to those athletic uses, that can substantially benefit Needham students and support or supplement school programs. So this differs from Barry Pollak's earlier proposal in that it, with regard to Barry Pollock's earlier proposal in that it, with regard to going from by right FAR to special permit FAR. This is just a consideration, among other considerations, that we have already in the proposed zoning. And we can use this as a consideration, so it's, it's quite flexible. But the pri, pri, so the primary thing, and I assume you think that is fine to have that kind of concern, which, you know, would apply that kind of thinking anyway to, when we're, when we're granting a special permit is, you know, the, the the value of that use to the town. But the big thing, of course, is the reduction in the maximum floor area and the increase, and it is, is probably less of a concern, but also the increase in open space. And of course, you, you know, with regard to open space, we already the, the warrant article already provides for the 50-foot landscape setback, so.
Dramatically, dramatically narrows the difference between the as-of-right and special permit FARs, which which was against the concept of what we were trying to do here. So that, it's a second aspect in it.
So I, I kind of may have missed it. So he wants to reduce the special permit to 1.0. But, but we can increase it for housing and for the fitness center by how much?
No, 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 there's no, his latest one removes those restrictions, which were 0.15 for each of housing and his rec center. So he's removed that requirement, and he's just suggesting that as part of the special permit process, consideration be given to the extent to which there is a rec center that can support basically the town.
No, I'm, I'm confused. How, what FAR can we approve under Barry's amendment? What FAR can we approve?
By a special permit, it's 1.0.
1.
1.0.
Yeah.
A fitness center or a, or housing.
It does not have to be those uses.
It's still 1.0.
Correct.
Yes.
So he's limiting everything to 1.0.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay.
Now, the other, the other issue is this, and if that passes, that passes. I wouldn't be surprised perhaps if it does, and a developer comes and asks for additional relief in a subsequent town meeting, but nevertheless. One tactic that I'm confused about that he has presented this motion, which I don't think has necessary.
I didn't do it.
I apologize, that certainly startled me too, and usually the first person he would acknowledge is they didn't do it, they did do it, so Paul, you're gonna discuss that.
Adam is only one child, so he must have done it. Anyway, go ahead.
That, that said. Barry has said forcefully yesterday on social media that he's encouraging Marcus and Lakshmi to make a motion to refer the whole thing back.
Neither. Oh, Marcus and Lakshmi, oh, I understand.
And/or any other town meeting member.
Okay.
Which suggests confusion in his overall strategy, because he's been advocating on social media with signage and so on, that says amend Article 5. So on the one hand, he's encouraging people to amend, and on the other, and on the other hand, he's encouraging to kill the whole thing. So it's not entirely clear what his, what he's trying to accomplish here. And he's had a number of mouthpieces on social media advocate for him and post this logo, amend Article 5. So I also expect, you know, protest today, morrow and muzzie in Article 5. As well as on Monday, based on what I've seen on social media, but nevertheless, just to go back to the motion itself. I think personally, we gave serious consideration to increase in the open space from 20 to 25%. Part of that was based on the parking requirement, and part of that was based on you know, all of the, the work that, that Natasha had done to figure out if we did push back by more than doubling the, the front setback on Highland and Gould from 20 to 50 feet. An additional, and we increased from 20 to 25%, which in itself is a 25% increase in open states.
Can I cut you short? It's quarter, it's, it's 10 minutes of 12.
Okay.
Okay, this isn't going to be on the agenda until Monday.
Correct.
Okay. I think our position is already clear that we're against any amendments.
Yes.
So we want, do we want to get the vote on this amendment or put that off until Monday?
Let's put it off until Monday, because we've got to get going, and I don't know that we need to vote on it. We don't know what his amendment is yet.
Yes, we do.
We know what his amendment is, it's been signed, it's been given to the town moderator.
I just read it to you.
Was that at 0.8, or was that at 1.0?
It is 1. 1 point z, z, zero.
It's 1.0, it's, it's, it's in your packages today, and it's the motion to amend that was provided to the moderator, it's on the web.
Fine. We can do this in 10 seconds. I make a motion that we not support the amendment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? A call for the vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so that motion passes, and we are not in favor of this amendment by Barry Pollock. I think that takes care of all the businesses before our meeting, is that right?
I just want to say one thing, I will be available, I'm watching town meeting remotely from home, but I'll be available. And I'm going to suggest that I'm going to send a text to, to all of you. So that if you need to communicate with me, there'll be a group, there'll be a conversation going. I think we want to continue this meeting right through town meeting, so we're allowed to deliberate.
Thank you, that procedural step we definitely must, must take to.
Right, where this is a special town meeting, it's different from the annual, this will only apply for today and tomorrow. Through the special town meeting.
Yes, that's correct.
And so I will, and I will send you a text so you can, so you can communicate with me directly and call me if you need me.
Right.
This is a reminder, I'll be in the same situation as Lee, not attending.
And, and the meeting would automatically adjourn, our meeting would automatically adjourn when the special town meeting adjourns. We don't know whether that will be Saturday or Sunday.
So may I, so if, after, if we've dispensed with Article 12. May, and I'm no longer a town meeting member. Should I stay for the whole of town meeting, or am I dismissed?
The person can, the seats are there for the town meeting member, they could. Isn't it true that he could sit there, continue to sit there if he wanted to?
I, I, I believe so, but you know, then again, I, I, I suspect so. I have, but I haven't been to one of these meetings. I've not been to one of these remote meetings to actually witness how things are actually administered, so. But it's my understanding he could stay there. What happened last time? There were, there were, there were among you, there were folks that were not town meeting members.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think anybody would kick you out, because they probably wouldn't even realize.
Yeah.
Town meeting member.
Which will be interesting, I don't know how I'm going to get in today, because I don't have a card that says Planning Board Member. Like I did with town meeting member.
Well, they have a list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll know.
They'll know, they, they won't.
That reminds me, I have to find my town meeting badge.
Okay, so I need that motion to, to continue this.
So I'm, I move, I move that we continue this meeting through the special town meeting. And that we automatically adjourn when special town meeting adjourns.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second on that procedural vote. No, no further discussion. All right, call for the vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so our meeting is now continued, and I'll see you at this special town meeting.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, we, the planning board meeting for tomorrow is no longer needed, is that correctly? Tomorrow morning, that was just a rain date?
That was a rain date unless the, there's a board law, what, might want to be.
We have continued this meeting until the adjournment of the special town meeting, whether that is Saturday or Sunday. If it's anticipated that there's something else we want to dis. Gus.
It's, it's a posted meeting and we can meet. So Alex, let's just hold it open and we'll see if, if the meeting closes, if, if we need it tomorrow, we'll use it. If we don't need it, we won't.
That's fine.
Okay, well, just in terms of my own time, just maybe text me either way, Lee, so I know what to expect.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, then.
See you all.
See you later.
See you soon, thank you.